So we're adding a discussion of town meeting as a new item seven. Moving the old number seven to eight and adjournment to nine. And are there any other adjustments?
No.
All right, uh, so is there anybody on line?
No, we're alone.
I think we should talk to it like it was thousands of people. I'd like to thank all of the people that helped me put this recording together.
Somebody might watch it later.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, okay.
That's the future audience.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure this is top of the heap of what to watch. All right, we'll leave that alone. But let's all introduce ourselves and what your favorite thing is. We'll start here.
And Carter, Monday night meetings.
Um, Billy, I like viewing mountains.
Nikki Krip, today's blue skies.
Yeah.
Tammy Brennan, today's sunshine.
Yeah, yeah, two votes for sunshine. All in favor, say aye. Okay, Ken, you gotta get better control of things here. All right, so.
Pick it up.
Did you guys have a quick one? We can talk about that in a moment here, number five. All right, any public comment? Suddenly someone chimes in, you guys are crazy. I, I wanna, I wanna copy this recording just for the fun of it. All right, no public comment, so did. Oh, there's minutes right there. Very good. So why don't you talk about the minutes since I wasn't there?
Yeah, well, there wasn't much happened. We just went through it, read through the items on the agenda. Had a little bit of discussion about Marcel parents subdivision, uh, Mylar that was here. Whether we could sign it or not, but it turned out the wastewater permit was here and so we could have signed it, but. I think you signed.
But you did sign it, right?
I did. And the other thing that was awaiting was the permit number. I noted that the file had no permit number, so Kathy might, she said she was gonna work with Brian to see about getting a permit number for it. But I signed it, put our date and otherwise it should be okay. I think she probably got a permit number that same day.
Uh, yeah, that was it. The nine-minute meeting, I believe.
Wow, that, that's. Well, you know, I'm, I'm wasting all of your time. You should have Ken for sure run all these.
Talking about things we like.
Just 'cause I watched the Grammys last night and, you know, I just thought it would be. All right, so, um, I think that I'll abstain from voting on the minutes, but all in favor of the minutes as drafted, please say aye. And all oppose, say nay, and one abstention, so it's three to zero passing. Very good. Thanks for doing those. And then the zoning administrator report. Has anybody seen Brian? Is he kinda starting to fill in?
It's Wednesday nights from seven to nine, but I've not, so I don't really, we don't really see him.
What's going on Wednesday night, seven to nine?
He's open.
Well, so he's got night hours. Interesting.
Is there any business that you know of coming up or?
Hamburgers and hot dogs.
There was a, there was a building permit for Jay Patel, who's gonna build on Paradise Lane. Uh, what else?
And that was probably a subdivision we decided years ago.
Yep, that lot just sold and I can't think of anything else, but.
Okay.
I'll have to remind him of maybe being able to come.
And, and you know, we don't really have to. If he would like to, he's welcome to.
Even if he popped up on.
Yeah, he could join us remotely. Yeah. And of course, look what he's missing.
Right.
Right, riveting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was some kind of major subdivision stuff to something that might be good to kinda have his input or.
Yeah.
He, you know, he would know more about the application, maybe.
It's kind of interesting just talking about zoning administrator reports of the past. You know, the public utilities.
You see.
There was, there was, there was a communications, oh, that's what it was. C U D Communications Union District. Apparently that failed.
No, it's become fiber works.
Is it working?
I think so. Brenda and Heather are still reps.
Okay. Cause I heard that Google was gonna get in on it and then Google decided not to.
Next to Chester's, in the old library or something. They now own an office.
In Fairfield?
In Fairfield, next to Chester's, it's a blended, so.
Okay.
Consolidated.
There's like kind of a little report that goes in the town.
Yeah, this year, yeah, all good.
Okay, well, that's good.
They're still there.
Yeah, the consolidate, they're, I don't know, they must be putting fiber in because consolidated said we were gonna, on our road was gonna get it in twenty twenty-five, I think he said, so.
Oh, really? Consolidated is considered?
He, either he knew, but he didn't say they were putting it in, but he said that's when it was scheduled to get after last, so.
They're putting it through town to try to compete with other options like Comcast.
They have it at the counter?
They came on my road.
They did.
They went up Waterman Mountain Road.
Yeah.
But anyways.
So they're doing the outskirts before they get the middle, huh? Well, you should do outskirts.
Yeah, if it's Phidam or is it something else? Phidam fiber, which is consolidated.
Phidam?
Phidam really is consolidated.
I don't know. I like consolidate. Phidam sounds weird.
I know.
It's like infinity, but we're not in.
The end is insane.
Yes, yes, Phidam. We're just fiddling around at Phidam. Yeah, anyway, so we'll see again. It was okay for the times that she was doing it and then it was okay when she wasn't, so. But as Ken said, it's nice when there's serious issues going on. It would have been nice to have kinda talked about that property that's becoming a fenced-in junkyard a little bit more.
Oh, yeah. I don't think that's done. I don't know if there's a permit, uh, issue for that, maybe.
Well, they got a fence up and they're putting a dozen tires in that.
Building in there still. But I think it has something to do with the floodplain.
Yeah, they did actually have a problem with the river protection corridor. And they adjusted the.
Building site.
And that took it away from that. So apparently they got that permit, but I don't know.
Seems like just wrecked cars get stored there instead of piling them up by the garage there.
Yeah, the fences like, it's almost like it's invisible. It's weird, huh? It's supposed to be opaque, but no, I can see there's like twenty guys in there. Looks like a junkyard with a cellophane fence. But it's better than a junkyard without one.
Yep. And they've got to be somewhere.
Right, right. Imagine they would get cleared out, you know, you get a certain number and he needs more room, so clear them out and.
We'll see. Yeah. You never know with junkyards. I just like to be upstream, not downstream.
Right. Right, because there's gotta be stuff leaking in.
Almost always, motor vehicles do. All right, so, um, that takes us then to number seven, the new thing. So I don't know, I have to apologize, I got my petition, I guess it is, for position
Yep.
in the, like, last week before it had to.
But it's in.
Did it, did it get enough signatures?
Yep.
Okay, so I thought maybe you might know.
Yeah. She would have let you know.
You're a popular, you're a popular chair, though.
I don't know about that. I'm, I'm sure.
Probably fill up on both sides.
Well, after tonight, I could probably have an extra chief.
Now, now we want you.
Yes, Ian Taylor Swift. So, um, and then who else is running?
Me.
You?
The three of you.
Nikki's running for select board too, though, or.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Running for select board, so.
Double duty.
We could use another mind there.
Good word.
Yeah.
Good way to put it.
Yeah, that's good. Well, I wish you luck.
Yep, it's coming up.
It is, and Kate's coming. Good.
Well, I got Connor to transfer.
Hmm.
I love, well, probably, she goes from afar.
So whose position would you be?
Terry's.
Oh, wow, that's a unique situation.
That was your campaign chest looking the.
I think I've got a buck. Yeah, if that dollar, you could sled on the hill.
Are there any other contested select boards? No?
No, Josh is running. Yep.
Would be running, or he's not?
No.
He's next.
His incumbent.
He's next year, maybe?
No, this is first year.
Lance is next year. Josh and Terry are this year.
Hmm, wow.
John might be next year.
I think John's next year.
Oh, yeah, John, that's another. Well, it'll be interesting. I hope that town meeting goes well. I will, uh, take a time to note that we are going to do the town plan at some point. I don't know if it'll be at the time when we talk about the, there's a whole list of different funds that we give, like Northwest Regional Planning Commission gets one. That's one opportunity for me to talk about it. The other would be at the end where you don't have any actions. I feel like I'd rather do it at the early part when we're still voting.
People are still waiting.
Yeah, because people leave.
We lose them.
Yeah. So I was just gonna share that, you know, people want to talk about, hear about town plan. This is an opportunity that we'll meet Mondays, typically the first, if not the first, and it would be the third uh, in case there's a holiday or something else. And that we really would appreciate people. Yeah, because.
So, like, some of the things that we'll be thinking about, like you said, was energy.
Right, housing is another.
Cell towers.
Yeah, is there anything going on with the cell tower in here?
There's a proposed one coming up. Cause it got recorded, there's a lease, Gary Flit has leased a piece to a cell tower. People that are trying to get things.
On his property?
On his property, um, by, behind the mobile homes.
Oh, by the school? Oh, that'll be good. That'll go over really well. Anytime you put them anywhere near a school, it freaks people out.
Yeah, but that's coming up, just so.
Yeah, so.
Really need to have all ducks in a row because having watched what Inesberg went through.
Because that was not, oh, that didn't go through.
Well, it's being, it's still in the court.
It's still in the, okay, cause I, I heard that.
It got, it passed and then there was a technicality and somebody contested it because of the, some kind of technical issue, so now it's bumped up a level, so it's the proverbial mess, honestly.
So just to share inside communications, um, the Northwest Regional Planning Commission met multiple times for the tower up at.
Their Matt Hall's property.
Yeah, and, um, we did not support it.
I think the, the town did and then.
Town did not support it in the end. And then, um, mostly about the fact that it doesn't really have the rural, it doesn't blend with the rural landscape and.
How high was Matt's gonna be?
A hundred and fifty feet, really tall.
Yeah.
And they were gonna make for four co-locations, but they didn't have anybody that was committing to go on it at all except a police antenna or fire antenna from in, um, St. Albans. And that's just this little single whip antenna on the top. It's like huge gargantuan um, steel lattice construction as opposed to a monopole. So we just really thought that they didn't take into consideration. It's a rural area, it should have minimal impact visually.
So are they adjusting or, or is it?
I don't think that the entity that is trying to build it is interested in adjusting. They kinda have one size for every place they go. And if that's what they wanna bring to
Yeah.
Bakersfield, it will equally be ugly and.
Is it the same organization?
Yeah, so I think that the state contracted with a company or at least the state has said, we need to put broadband everywhere. And so this company is trying to put them where they need them and then let the telecommunications companies go on them as opposed to, right.
Cause they, maybe like the cell companies aren't like Verizon or whoever, they, they don't actually build towers, they just.
No, they usually lease the space and, um, you know, the only thing is that they were gonna make it a hundred and fifty feet tall so they could put four different carriers on there. I've been driving all around the state and you can hardly find any that have more than two. And was always like, you go down to the Four Corners in St. Albans where you get on Interstate ninety-one, got the Exxon and then the other gas station on the other side. Big intersection, there's a monopole there. Monopoles look better, in my opinion. But it's only got two carriers. Here's a huge place serving a big city, the interstate, two carriers. Are we gonna get four carriers on our little highway, thirty-six or one oh eight? Um, yeah, so I just feel like that they're using industrial-looking towers where what we really want, at least industrial, yeah. Exactly, a little shorter. And that's what we ask, you know, make it shorter and use this different pole.
And that company wasn't interested in doing.
Apparently not. Apparently they've sued.
Well, that's what I'd heard, that it was back in, it had bumped up.
Yeah, so we'll see.
I wonder if there's a way of having some conversations with the community before it gets. Some of those meetings were not pretty and it was kinda, you were there when you came, yeah, they were great.
That's my neighborhood up there, for sure.
Yeah.
I think they didn't really expect as much pushback as I ended up getting, you know, and.
But I think there will be. I think, I think there's a, there's a, you know, people who really have opinions about that and I think we have to be prepared to balance.
One of the big, one of the big person really stirred up was worried about her kid's exposure to it. There really is any proof of radiation or whatever it was right next to the school, that seems like.
That's gonna whip up further, but.
Yeah.
So I would like to see if we can somehow mitigate that something. I have no idea how that would work, but.
One of the things that we tried to do, I don't know if we did it adequately, is in our town plan describe what we think relative to energy facilities and I don't know how well we did it, but the idea is that you, you don't wanna exclude them from, you know, your whole municipality, chapter six, page thirty-eight. And yet you want to try to preserve certain elements of the municipality that are appreciated. Almost everything in our energy chapter talks about all the needs for energy and especially renewable. Oh, this is not energy, this is telecommunications. It should not be looking at energy projects. Energy projects are similar to that, like, so, and.
We sort of needed to have wording in the plan if we wanted to have any kind of say.
Right.
And like height.
Well, yeah, or even, you know, cause the Public Utilities Commission sort of decides all that and if, you know, someone said, oh, I wanna put up three wind, wind towers on but are not rigged, if we didn't have anything in our plan about, you know, wanting them kind of, anything.
Under like protected horizons or whatever.
That was part of it, yeah.
New sheds.
What's it called, the new shed?
All right, so town communications. What we say, this is on page twenty-six, which is chapter four, utilities, facilities and services, says access to telecommunications services, including high-speed internet. So your phone service are important, not only to the quality of life for residents, but for economic development. Under Governor Jim Douglas, current Governor Pete Shumlin, so obviously this is pretty old. Reminds pursuing a course to provide universal cellular. Such advances have the potential to significantly impact the local economy and rural communities as they allow more residents to communicate and may enable more people to live further and further for population. The town must determine if there are planning and zoning ramifications for antenna towers and other telecommunications infrastructure. Guidance to site towers where community interest for historic preservation should be considered. So we don't really say anything, which is too bad.
Yeah.
And so it might be too late, given that we didn't really put anything in here about like protecting certain views. Yeah, so. Actually, you know, Ken, you bring up a good point and, and that is putting it where there's already development could be better. Obviously, down at the Hull Farm, it's all rural and then suddenly you have this industrial structure. Here in this town, it's still rural, but it's also residential, pretty dense residential. Um, what would be ideal is to put it on some sort of built structure, like this building, the church, the historical society or the post office, something big enough to get it up high, but.
But that's not a hundred and fifty feet.
No, that's kinda what they would like to be able to do.
That would they want, a hundred and fifty feet?
Church, we talked about it at the church years ago.
Yeah, using the steeple or something.
But that's not a hundred and fifty feet either. And there's no steeple anymore, I think.
No.
No, but what it's good doing is you could get them to pull the steeple that housed it and put a steeple on there and they wouldn't have to build a tower, they'd have to reinforce the structure.
Yeah, but would that be high enough? Would that be like seven?
So, again, they really would like to go tall and one fifty is kind of better.
Between one twenty and one fifty is what they want.
Well, they don't wanna go that high because then you have to put lights on it, FAA restrictions. Um, so, you know, maybe you can build shorter and maybe even more. So, cause they, they have to kind of see each other. And if this one's up here and the trees are in the way, it might not see it, so it's. But we'll see what happens.
Where is there, is there any on one oh eight right now?
Isn't there something on Fairfield?
I don't know where they are, but, um.
A booster.
I don't know. There's, one got put in somewhere.
I think.
Fairfield Way is.
In, in, in thirty-six, some, something came up there.
One oh eight, isn't there one down this way?
Can't picture it.
I, 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 I almost always lose my cellphone coverage as soon as I leave right there. But I have AT&T.
So do I.
I, I don't know what Verizon people find. But anyway. Unfortunately, we're, we're kinda behind the eight ball.
Yeah. And it's something I think will garner an awful lot of public interest. And rumors get spun up, or not rumors, but, you know, misinformation, so I think we need to be ahead of that.
So like, what about like cannabis? Is that something that would be in the town?
There's one bit under policies that says support the enhancement of the telecommunications network when such facilities do not have significant adverse health, environmental or scenic impacts.
That is.
So.
Doesn't really help.
No.
It is, it is a little bit.
It's in there.
That would suggest not in a heavily populated area. That would so, suggest outside of.
Right, well, if there, yes.
Yeah, it would be better to, to have said something like, we don't want it to interfere with certain views. Like, I think a view is the view of Mount Mansfield from places in town. Another view would be the view of the Cold Hollow Mountains as you come from Fairfield.
And this one would be there.
And in some ways, putting it in the village kind of hides it. I think it's the height. That might be the thing for people to really.
The height is tall. It's like seventy feet above.
But I think there's gonna be a lot of people that are going to focus on the school and children.
Yeah.
Despite the fact that there's no ability for local or state regulators or others to, um, feel against a site on basis of health. That's a federal jurisdiction. So they're not gonna win that fight. So the fights they have to win are based on
placement.
They're like aesthetics, health, environmental impacts. Health is gonna be difficult, so that leaves environmental and aesthetics. So maybe you'll be dealing with that if you get elected.
Fun parts?
My list.
The list.
So.
Got kind of a list that I've just been writing down as things come up, like Airbnbs, we don't have anything about that in the plan. Cannabis cultivation camps, I guess it sounds like our, kind of our camp regulations maybe need to be tightened up a little bit or.
That was something Brenda was trying to address before she left and that was one of the things that I was hoping Brian would have picked up, I mean, he hasn't, he hasn't, but.
There was some talk of people were staying longer, you know, living in camps.
Right, part of it looks like the definition of how long they could be there.
Well, that there was, and the road issue of nine one one access.
I think, yeah.
But like to have something written so that you can listen to that and say.
So, now, what you were just talking about sometimes falls into the realm of regulation and the bylaws are actually regulation.
Yeah.
And that reminded me that our bylaws do have more about telecommunications. Our bylaws do have more about telecommunications. And.
More specifics.
Yeah, um. I don't know if they're gonna be sufficiently favorable. To, um. Yeah, I guess this is where we really put our. In- invested our.
Yeah.
But it's got, um. Like three full pages of it, not just one paragraph and one bullet. Trying to see if there's anything.
Construction standards, two hundred, we've less than two hundred.
I wonder if we should make this an agenda item. For next month and the month after, give us some time to, cause I must admit, I have not really. Read those in depth recently. I think I perused them when I first joined the board, but.
Well, I think you're absolutely right. It would be useful. For us to. In fact, you're right on two points you've made here, in my opinion. First, we ought to do something as a town. To be preparing for this, that select board, maybe. The planning commission, maybe the whole community. And second, we should. Educate ourselves.
Yeah.
But, um, that leads to the next meeting. Which is scheduled for March fourth, I think. And that's school meeting.
Oh.
School board meeting.
Yep.
And I think we should, uh. Change the date.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, we could change it to earlier so that we're. Better prepared for town meeting day, we wanted to talk about this, or we could make it later, which is what we usually do.
I think we should make it later, and I don't think this should come up at town meeting day from us, because we're just not ready to.
Yeah.
We don't have any.
Anything, yeah.
There's no educated. Conversation, I think, yet.
And I continue that the, um. The regional plan actually has a little bit of cover for all the communities too.
Of all communities.
Yeah.
So do you see anything about telecommunications in zone?
Uh, yeah, forty.
Yeah, it's page, yeah, forty-six. It's actually a lot.
Oh, wow. Six plus. There is. Nine is about.
So there are exemptions, for example, anything that's less than a hundred feet is exempt. And that's kind of a regional thing. We do that with wind too. And that means that they could just build them.
For any reason?
Well, that specifically says for municipal radio dispatch service or emergency radio dispatch service. That's an exemption. But it's kind of like. Going to part D of the construction standards. They have to be less than two hundred. At ground level to the top of the highest structure or component. That's really tall.
It's really tall.
Yeah, that would require FAA lighting. I think. Yeah, so there's a lot in there, and you're right, Nikki, we don't wanna really go. Too. Far into it without giving everybody time to read it, but. Um.
Yeah, that would extend the town meeting, I think, if you said, oh, they're talking about putting a.
It could come up though.
I think if it comes up, then we're just saying yes, and we will be having community involvement and please come and be informed.
And that could be like our March meeting, we, we, we prepare for it. So the. All right, anyway, you were talking, I, I kinda interrupted you.
Well, I was, I was just reading that list that I've sort of compiled, and, and some of that stuff is bylaw stuff, more than, more than town plan stuff, but. It's, you know, there are often people coming in here that's mentioning certain things that, you know, we need to take enough on and. Or need to consider, which is good.
So. Uh. This McGraw, what's McCall?
McCall, yeah, Linda.
Linda. She definitely. Should be involved, cause she had a lot of ideas.
Yeah.
And hopefully she'll indeed. Do that. I don't know if you all know, but we have two people for the regional planning commission. And Linda's the second one, not the first, so that's, that's nice that she's involved. The other thing is we could actually have somebody come in and talk to us. Um, we could.
Like from regional or?
Yeah, either regional or public. Service department.
Would be useful to know what. The things that we don't necessarily have control over, or things that have already been, you know, the norm, it would be good to know what those. Are so that we're consistent with what's going on around.
Right.
Right.
In the area.
Yeah. Yeah, we could look at other plans, so it's probably most towns' plans are on their websites, wondering, or.
Yeah.
Is ours on the website? Can you read our town plan on the website?
So if you go to Northwest Regional Planning Commission, you can get to every town. Plan and bylaw for each of the municipalities in the region. And I think if you go to other regions, they do the same thing. I haven't really looked at, but I go to Northwest Regional Planning Commission to look at. Other communities all the time. And. It just takes a lot to be familiar with this, and that's why getting a person who does it full-time.
Right.
To talk to us.
Yeah, very helpful.
We don't need to recreate the wheel.
Right.
There are people who've already done that work, we don't need to.
And, and even when we, when we re- redid this last time, there was a lot of wording came from regional, you know, they, cause they know what it's.
Yeah.
Sound like and. Covers, covers bases.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's a tendency for the region to try to reinforce the state. And then the region tries to get the towns to reinforce the region.
Right.
Which then reinforces the state, and if you don't really pay attention to what the state's doing. You don't really know what you're reinforcing as a municipality. So it's gotta be careful. Anyway, I, I would suggest that, you know, we could, maybe if we don't have a hearing come up in March. Or a subdivision. We could make the March meeting. All based on this, and that everybody could read this, and we could, I could see if we could get somebody to come in and, and talk.
What will the date be? It's gonna be like.
Eighteenth will be the next.
The eleventh.
Well. It would have to be two weeks after.
The twelfth is the select board meeting.
Right.
Okay. That actually works for me, cause Kate's.
So it would be the eighteenth. I'm gonna put it in my calendar now. So we'll. Move the meeting to the eighteenth. From the fourth. And that'll be. Usual time. And I'm going to send a letter right now. To. Emily Clough. See if I can get her.
Did anyone go to the flood resiliency meeting?
No, did you?
No. I was going to, and Melissa scheduled me.
Oh, the floods, I went to the Act two fifty-one. Um, that was Zoom, and I registered for the flooding. But then that night was like, I can't, I can't make.
Yeah, yeah, I was busy too.
Have they rescheduled the breaking Monday?
No.
You guys like working every night?
Cause they have.
Yeah.
Talk about timing. It's just all.
Probably the most serious thing that's been on the. Everything else has been a joke. Oh, you don't wanna release this.
Yeah.
It's been bad. Yeah, well, we, I think we've mentioned everybody that was on the Grammys last night.
Are we ready to adjourn?
So, yeah.
I think so.
That sounds like a motion. Easy.
Motion.
Alright, so motion to adjourn from. Nikki.
Tammy.
Doesn't matter.
No, it's Nikki, look, you spoke up.
I did speak up.
Jesus. Don't be, okay, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, we are adjourned.
And I can end meeting gradually.